Good evening and welcome to the May 10, 2021 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one item for discussion, and that is policies for mayor and city council conduct. And I wanted, before I hand it over to Tanisha and Lynn, I just wanted to give everybody just a little bit of background on how we got here. This came out of a conversation I was having with Ryan months ago when a story came out about a jurisdiction which I will not mention, in which there was a situation where an elected official was accused, and I, you know, I have no idea how it's being adjudicated or anything like that, but was being accused of, I think it was sexual harassment, and it got us to thinking during this conversation, what would happen if hypothetically, there would be some serious, not trivial, but serious misbehavior by an elected official in our jurisdiction? What would be the remedy? And it turns out that there really is not a practical remedy for a situation like that. And so we're sort of gonna broach that topic tonight, but I want to make very clear that this discussion has no bearing on any behavior from any, anybody in the city of Gaithersburg. This is just us sort of saying, maybe it's a healthy thing to have something in place, some mechanism in place in case there is some serious wrongdoing by an elected official at some point in the future in Gaithersburg. So that's, that's where we are, and Tanisha and Lynn, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right. Lynn is driving the bus tonight, so thank you, Lynn.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Ashman, and thank you for that summary of sort of how we got here. As the mayor said, when this issue came up in another jurisdiction, staff was directed to kind of look at our current policies and practices and to see what mechanisms or remedies we may have in place. And there are a few under state law in the current city charter and code, but really not ones that effectively would address this type of situation. So we wanted to have some discussion with you this, this evening to kind of step forth what the current rules and parameters are, what some other jurisdictions do, and what some options may be going forward. So talk to me if you could please pull up the PowerPoint, and it's a packet page three. Thank you. Next slide, please. So by way of background, I know that the mayor and council are all very aware that the city does have adopted personnel rules and regulations. We have a personnel manual and then also administrative personnel policies, and these do address harassment and misconduct by city employees, but they don't address elected officials, nor are they applicable to elected officials. There are some, also some provisions of state law that addresses misconduct by elected officials, but only if criminal conduct is involved, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. Now, under the current city charter and code, the only remedy absent a criminal conviction from misconduct allows for recall of elected officials, but that requires a petition of at least 20% of the registered voters in the city. Next slide, please. So this evening, we want to first review the current mechanisms, then look at ordinances and policies from other jurisdictions, and then we are hoping that the mayor and council that you will, will provide us with some guidance on your preference of policies, so we can work to develop a policy, you know, that works best for the city of Gaithersburg. Next slide, please. So we're gonna start with state law, and that involves the Maryland Constitution. There is a provision in the Maryland Constitution that does provide that if an elected official is found guilty of a misdemeanor related to the elected official's public duties that involve moral perpetuity, then there is a remedy. The way that it works under the, the Maryland Constitution is if you are charged with a misdemeanor, which obviously is a crime, you would be suspended from office during the criminal proceedings, and if there is a final conviction, a guilty conviction, then the elected official would be removed by office, by operation of law. So a lot of people ask, what is a misdemeanor related to elected officials' public duties and responsibilities that involve moral perpetuity? Not a phrase that we use on a daily basis, very regularly. So Maryland common law recognizes four misdemeanors for public officials: for malfeasance, misfeasance, nonfeasance, and misconduct in office. And again, we provided the definitions for those particular misdemeanors. Next slide. So how does it work to be charged with a misdemeanor for moral perpetuity? It is something that happens very, very rarely, so it's, it's not something that is very commonly prosecuted. The investigation and prosecution of these cases is handled by the State Prosecutor's Office, which is an, an office that's, that's run out of Annapolis. They have a division that deals solely with criminal activity by public officials. I will tell you, in my 30-plus years of representing municipalities, I've only been involved in one investigation with, by the State Prosecutor's Office. Luckily, in that case, they found that there was no misconduct, so there were no criminal charges. But again, it's, it's very rare for these types of cases to, to happen. But how rarely do occasionally happen? And they've given you example of one here that involved the county executive for Anarundel County. He was convicted of misdemeanors and removed from office because he had county staff pick up over a thousand of his campaign signs and bring them and store them in his basement, and then would periodically call on staff to pick them up from his basement and distribute them to various residents and businesses. They would also have to pick up campaign checks from residents, and then they also had to drain his catheter bag multiple times during the day. So, you know, again, very extreme situation, something, you know, that would hopefully never, ever come close to happening here, but in that case, he was convicted of a misdemeanor and removed from office. One of the interesting things about this case, though, is they had also tried to bar him from running for office again, and the court said that that was beyond the authority to do, that he could be removed from office but not be prohibited from running for office again. So next slide, please. We do have a remedy currently under the city charter, which is Section 22 for the recall of elected officials. To my knowledge, I don't believe this provision has ever been used in the history of Gaithersburg, and if it has, it's been done many, many years ago. It's fairly typical for municipalities to have recall provisions similar to what Gaithersburg uses. The details are provided in Section 6C31 of the code, and in order for there to be a recall, there has to be a petition, which has to include a justification for the recall. That's to be signed by 20% of the qualified voters in the city. Then, once the petition is received, the Board of Supervisors of Election would certify the signatures and certify, or verify the signatures and certify the petition. After the certification, there's a public hearing that is held before the mayor and council to give the person who is being asked to be recalled an opportunity to, to state their case or to get their justifications as to why they shouldn't be recalled. And then a special election is scheduled. At the special election, the ballot would list the official's name and the choice to affirm or remove the individual from office. Next slide, please. So this slide kind of shows all of the grounds that are included in Section 6C32 for recall. As I just said, that the petition for recall has to state a specific ground for recall, and there's such things as conviction of a felony, illegal conduct, gross negligence, incompetence, misuse of public funds or public authority, these types of remedies. I do want to just kind of clarify, we talked earlier about the Maryland Constitution that allowed for, provided that elected officials would be removed from office if they were convicted of a misdemeanor related, of moral perpetuity related to their office. That is a very limited ground, so you could be convicted of a felony not related to your office and, and not be removed from office. So I do want to provide that clarification. Next slide, please. And certainly, as I go through here, please, I know you're not shy to jump in and ask questions, or certainly we can save them to the end as well. So the recall provision is very common. You know, many Maryland municipalities have a recall provision very similar to Gaithersburg's. We did look at Rockville-Fredrickson to Comer Park, and they all have a, you know, very similar recall provision. So the, the slides that we've gone through so far gives a summary of the current law that's in place to address misconduct by elected officials in Gaithersburg. So there are really only two remedies under current law, and that would be a criminal conviction of a misdemeanor for moral perpetuity related to your office or recall. And absent, you know, one or the other of those two things, there's nothing in state law or the city code or charter that would have any other ability to discipline sanction an elected official for their conduct. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. So we're gonna turn to what the, what's currently in place in Gaithersburg and kind of what we looked at, a lot of provisions, both in a number of other Maryland municipalities as well as municipalities across the state. And I do want to give a big shout out to Jim Peck at the Maryland Municipal League, who was a great source for providing links of all kinds of policies from other jurisdictions. So many Maryland municipalities do have charter provisions providing for forfeiture of elected office, and typically, they involve one or more, usually three or four of the items listed here. They would be for a direct violation of a, of a charter provision, conviction of a felony, moving your residents outside of the municipality, or failing to attend a specified number of meetings without being excused by council. And on the fourth one for failing to attend meetings, that was probably the least common of these four that, that I saw in the charter provisions that were reviewed. And a lot of them did vary as to the number of meetings or the period of time. Pretty much all of them had a provision that allowed for being excused by council. So for example, if you knew you were gonna be out due to surgery or illness, or, you know, something like that, active-duty military deployment, that would be considered to be excused by council. Again, assuming that you went to council and told them that that was gonna happen. But many of them had, if you missed, anywhere from three to six consecutive meetings, or a number of meetings over either a four-month or a six-month period of time. So again, there were, there were a lot of different options within those parameters. When looking at them, Aberdeen had the most comprehensive code provisions of all the Maryland municipalities that we looked at, and so I did include a copy in the, the packet materials of what Aberdeen has included in its, in its code. They, they've kind of incorporated a code of conduct into their city code. So that was one of the examples included. So with that, I'm gonna turn to codes of conduct, because this is, next slide, please. We really didn't see municipalities in Maryland with codes of conduct, but we did see a lot of examples of codes of conduct from municipalities across the country. A lot of these came out of California, Colorado, but, you know, again, a number of different states were included in the examples that we could find. So a code of conduct would be more of a policy adopted by resolution of the mayor and council, and not necessarily included in the, the city code by ordinance. And a lot of these codes of conduct have, you know, varying provisions, but most of them had sections dealing with conduct with other elected officials, which mostly dealt with decorum during meetings, conduct with staff, which were really kind of to, to garner the authority over staff and a city manager for of government to ensure elected officials were not directing staff directly. Code of conduct with the public, which dealt with things such as being welcoming at public meetings, public hearing participation required, just providing that, that things were fairly and evenly addressed to participants during hearings. Conduct with other boards and commissions, which mostly dealt with understanding, respecting the roles of the various commissions and the mayor and council's roles. Conduct with media, and then enforcement. So again, in the agenda packet, I provided just one example of a code of conduct that came from the city of Green Bay, Wisconsin. I do have a number of other examples. It was one that, of the ones provided that I thought was particularly well-done. Next slide, please. So in addition to addressing a number of the topics that, that we just talked about in codes of conduct, they all also contain a complaint procedures and investigation procedures. So the complaint procedures deal with if someone has, believes that a member of the elected official, mayor, the mayor, the council member has violated the code of conduct, and how do you file a complaint against that individual? Universally, they all did require a written complaint alleging the violation. And then there were a variety of different people that the complaint was typically filed with. Most frequently, either the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk, or the Ethics Commission. There were one or two that had it filed with the mayor, but that seemed to be kind of the, the exception versus the rule. And then there was a number of different provisions in these codes of conduct dealing with investigations of allegations. Who would conduct the investigation? What kind of hearing process would be involved? Typically, they had the investigation being done by either the local Ethics Commission or by outside legal counsel. For hearing process, most of the codes of conduct did have a, at least it gave the individual who was complained against the opportunity to have a public hearing. Sometimes it was optional, sometimes it was required. Some had differences between what they deemed a minor violation versus a major violation, where you would get a public hearing on a, on a major violation, but a minor violation, where there would be more of a kind of a reprimand or type action that public hearings weren't, weren't allowed in those types of situations. So next, please. So once there is a complaint, there's an investigation, there's a finding that there is violation of the code of conduct. The next really big question comes with, what are the enforcement mechanisms? Most of the codes of conduct that we reviewed did allow for reprimand of the, the elected official, censure, loss of committee assignments, and then some included loss of travel reimbursement or other budgetary restrictions. Those were the ones that we typically found in most of the conduct. That was probably a smaller group of codes of conduct that we reviewed that allowed that. And I think the, you know, sort of the rationale for that is, you know, the voters have spoken, the voters have put someone in office, and I think that there's a feeling that, you know, to remove someone from office, it should be the voters, and who could do that through a recall mechanism? So that seemed to be, you know, a sanction that a few of them had, but not all of them had. Many of the codes of conduct did require a supermajority vote by the council to take any enforcement action. So instead of by a simple majority, it would be by a four-to-one vote under our system. Next slide, please. So the third kind of mechanism we looked at is if you would not want to adopt a code of conduct, if you would want to adopt something a little bit more narrow, dealing with harassment type issues. We looked at harassment policies, and again, most jurisdictions do have a harassment policy that addresses employees, which certainly Gaithersburg does, but we did not find any municipality in Maryland that had a harassment policy that was applicable to elected officials. And I do want to give one little caveat there in Aberdeen that has some code provisions. And again, that was one of the examples that we attached. There, there is part of that, that those code provisions does deal with harassment by elected officials. So the city of Frederick has been discussing adopting a harassment policy. They've talked about it at several work sessions, but they have yet to adopt a policy. So they would be the, the first in Maryland, should they adopt it, to have a specific policy addressing harassment by elected officials. And we did include a copy of Frederick's draft policy in the background materials. So again, I caution that is a draft, I'm not sure what their final version, if adopted, will, will look like, but there is a draft included. Next slide, please. So if the mayor and council would wish to pursue a harassment policy, we wanted to provide just a little bit of background as to what would be involved in, in that. So we took a look at discrimination, and I'm sure as many of you know that discrimination is prohibited, and that comes from Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, which originally included discrimination against protected classes of race, color, religion, sex, and national origin. Since 1964, there have been a number of federal and state laws, such as the Discrimination Act and the Americans with Disability Act, that have expanded the, the definition of a protected classification to include age, veteran status, pregnancy, disability, and genetic status. Next slide, please. So when we look at harassment, we usually look at the EERC, since they are the federal agency that is charged with enforcing harassment policies and procedures. So under the EERC's definition for harassment to be actionable, it must be severe or persuasive, which means it becomes a condition of employment and to create a hostile work environment that a reasonable person would consider intimidating, hostile, or abusive. I do want to note that that's the legal standard for liability for harassment, not necessarily what we should try to attain. You know, I think certainly, you know, any harassment that would, would make employees, the public, or people that elected officials are interacting with, you know, should be prohibited conduct. Next slide, please. So that's really kind of the background of, you know, what's currently in place, what some of the options would be, or what some, what other jurisdictions do. So we did want to take a look at what policy options would be available to the mayor and council, and then hopefully they get some guidance from you as to how you'd like us to proceed. The first option would be to amend the city charter to be consistent with what a lot of other Maryland charters include, which would require forfeiture of office for violation of the city charter, conviction of a felony, missing a specified number of meetings without excuse, and obviously, we'd need to get some details to what that number, or, or time period, and then also for moving outside of the city. Now, I do want to, with the fourth one, moving outside of the city, I do want to note that we currently do have our, in our charter, a residence requirement for both the mayor and council members, and it's implied in that section that you have to ring, or if not implied, it's stated that you have to maintain your residence. And I guess what's implied is that if you didn't maintain your residence, then you would be automatically removed from office because you would no longer meet the qualifications. So it might help to clarify that provision. Next slide, please. So option two would be to create a code of conduct for the elected officials, and again, that would be by resolution, and they could contain some of the items that, that we addressed earlier, addressing interaction with other elected officials, staff, boards, commissions, the public and the media. Could contain harassment policies or prohibitions. Would need to include procedures for acceptance and investigation of complaint, and then also enforcement mechanisms. So what penalties are, would be out there for violations of the code of conduct. Next slide. Or if you wanted to take a more limited approach, we could look at just doing a harassment policy, which would also be adopted by resolution of, of the council. And there, we would need to look at the scope of the, the policy, and a lot of the same factors of, you know, what's the mechanism for reporting a complaint, investigating the complaint, determining a violation, and then what enforcement mechanisms. Interestingly, if you know, if you looked, took a look at Frederick's harassment policy, you know, it defines, you know, what harassment is, how complaints happen, how it's investigated, and then it's investigated by their Ethics Commission, but then it doesn't talk at all about enforcement mechanisms. So, you know, that, that was one gap I did note in their draft policy. So while they prohibit it, it doesn't really say what happens if someone violates, would violate their harassment policy. Next slide. So as we're moving forward on this issue, you know, I certainly do want to note that you, this is not a one option or the other option. You could certainly combine the options together, but if you would choose option two, which would be a code of conduct, or three, which would be a harassment policy, now there, there are a number of issues we would need to flesh out a little bit more, such as the things that we've talked about, who receives the complaint, who evaluates the complaint, who investigates the complaint, you know, how's it determined whether there's a violation? Is there a public hearing process involved? You know, who determines the penalty and what penalties are, are authorized? Next slide, please. So with that background, you know, staff, as, as we looked at this, you know, I think we were kind of originally sort of tasked to create a policy and come to you all, but this is one we really think this is your policy. You know, staff is certainly here to assist you and provide resources in developing the policy, but, you know, we do think that this is a policy that needs to be driven by the mayor and council and needs to, you know, accurately reflect what, you know, your wishes and desires are for this policy. So what we are recommending is appointment of a subcommittee, and this is just one suggestion you guys could flush us out however, you know, you think is best. And we would hope that that subcommittee could work with staff to develop, you know, what types of document you would like to see based on the guides we received this evening. Once we have a draft, certainly that would be circulated to the full mayor and council individually for comments before bringing these back to the mayor and council for approval. And with that, we're ready to take questions.
Thank you so much, Lynn. I want to thank everybody involved in doing the research on this exercise here. I want to make a couple of points, then I see Ryan saying, I'll turn it over to him. First off, for anybody, members of the public watching, that last part about, you know, the key policy decisions here, there's a, there's a good reason why this should be a council-driven policy or law, or however we structure this, and that's because in our system of government, the mayor and council hire the city manager and the city attorney. And so to put them in a position of finding some sort of, forming some sort of policy, some sort of code of conduct for us is, is a strange position to put them in. So it's important, I think, that we flesh out as much of this, you know, with assistance, but we, we sort of be the drivers on these policies as possible. I, I like the way you laid this out, I think, option one. My initial intent in bringing this up wasn't necessarily to go into a full drafting of full code of conduct. I, I generally, I love and respect the traditions that we have here in the city of Gaithersburg. I think we've, we've worked informally in a collegial way, and it's worked, it's worked fine. And, and I don't want to set, send the wrong message by overdoing this and finding, and having to write some sort of full code of conduct. Of course, I'm interested to hear what the council has to say on, on these points. But I do think option one, as a mechanism for, okay, you're convicted of a felony, you're not making the meetings, you move out of the city, it clarifies, I think, what would be sort of common sense situations that would, that would result in forfeiture of office. When we get to something like harassment, it's a little different, it's a little more complicated. And so maybe it's a combination of option one and option three, without going through the full code of conduct and option two. That's kind of where I'm inclined to begin this with, but I, I'm very interested to hear from the council. We'll start with Ryan, and whoever else wants to speak after Ryan, just raise your hand.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to staff for the presentation and the research. As the mayor indicated at the beginning of our discussion, I, I raised this issue with him a few months ago after hearing of the events in another jurisdiction, because elected officials do need to be held accountable for our behavior. And frankly, I find it unsettling to realize that very few local government jurisdictions even have any kind of that very few local government jurisdictions even have any kind of, whether it's a, you know, a sanctioning mechanism, or, you know, a code of conduct, or some other sort of policy to cover certain kinds of egregious misbehavior. And I think that it's not enough for us to just say that elected officials can be held accountable every four years when they're on the ballot, and that's enough. You know, even with a recall, there's a very high hurdle to even initiate a recall process. And, you know, in our collective memory, I don't think any of us has ever even heard of that coming close to being, you know, an actual successful effort to, to start a recall process, let alone finish one. But even if somebody did pursue the recall process, that's still, under our charter, wouldn't cover a lot of things, including certain egregious misbehavior that may not technically be criminal. Or even if it is criminal, if it's not a crime, a misdemeanor of moral turpitude related to the office, then it might still also not be covered anyway. So, you know, I do think it's important that we have this conversation and we proceed with some kind of meaningful process and hopefully a good work product. That said, I do think we need to have checks and balances here and ensure that whenever we decide to go with, we really think about due process for any elected official who might be accused of something, to make sure that these provisions that we might end up implementing are not abused for political reasons. And so we have to kind of do a balancing act and make sure that we are creating a process where people can be held accountable, as they should be, but in an appropriate way with an appropriate process. And anytime that we're suggesting something as severe as reversing the will of the voters by removing someone from office who's been duly elected, that's a big deal, as Lynn was saying. So I do think we need to be deliberative in developing whatever policy we pursue. But the reason I brought it up those, those few months ago, and the reason the mayor and I spoke about it, and the reason we're sort of having this discussion tonight is because we believe that we should have some kind of meaningful policy and it ought to have penalties that are meaningful and proportionate. And that may mean in certain cases, severe penalties, including as severe as removal from office if due process is followed and if the misbehavior is sufficiently egregious to warrant that. So personally, I am, I'm sort of in agreement with the mayor. I kind of like a combination of option one and option three at this point. Having looked over the, the sample code of conduct from, I believe it was from Green Bay, you know, I thought that was a little extreme to be formalizing, you know, such things as how council members should address each other in the chambers and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I agree that those are appropriate behaviors, but I don't need, I don't necessarily believe that they need to be sort of formalized in law or in some sort of code. I think we ought to just sort of know on some of those very basic level things about how to act civilly with each other. But, but I do think that when it comes to more serious things like harassment, sexual harassment, or, you know, workplace harassment, that we ought to have absolutely some sort of formalized policy with, with appropriate penalties. So that's why I'm sort of with the mayor on the kind of hybrid option one, option three. I did have a question for Lynn. You know, you talked a little bit about, you know, sometimes jurisdictions putting these items in a charter, sometimes putting them in a code, and sometimes using the resolution option. And I guess I'm just trying to figure out sort of the pros and cons of each in terms of the legal authority of a charter provision versus a resolution, for example. I mean, are we basically only constrained insofar as state law and our charter tell us we can't go beyond a certain point? Or we're not authorized to go beyond a certain point? For example, if we, if we decide to do this as a resolution? Or aside from, you know, state law telling us that certain things have to be in the charter, could we put whatever we wanted otherwise in the charter in terms of, you know, what items would, would warrant forfeiture of office? Or are we limited to only those items that you listed in the presentation? Or are those just sort of examples of things that are common?
Yeah, the, the four items were examples of things that were fairly common in Maryland. You know, we could put additional provisions in the charter, again, provided they don't conflict with state law. Part of my thought process is if you were going more with either code of conduct or harassment policy, we would probably want to add a provision to the charter really authorizing you to adopt policies dealing with the conduct of mayor and council. I mean, currently in the, in the charter, there's provision saying you can adopt policies for employees. You can adopt purchasing policies, you know. And so there's a charter provision authorizing that. And then we, we've always done the separate policy by resolution. So that would be, you know, my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go to Mike and then Rob.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lynn, for a really thorough and clear presentation. So I want to get back to the, the same issue that, that we were just talking about in terms of the charter and whether, whatever we decide to do, whether that should be included as a, as an amendment, I guess would be an amendment to the charter in terms of, of these particular issues. It would seem that part of our oath of office is that we uphold the charter so that if this becomes part of the charter, then anything in the charter, we are obligated in taking the oath to, to uphold those, those rules. It would seem for those, you know, the, this, this policy. So it would seem that including it as part of the charter would be enough so that it wouldn't have to be specified when we take the oath of office because that's our commitment to uphold the charter. Is that reasonable to assume that, that kind of take, takes care of this whole issue of how each of us, or how each elected official becomes aware of these, of these obligations?
I mean, I think it really can be done either way. Yeah, certainly you can, you know, put them in the charter as, you know, very specific information. You know, generally, the, the charter deals with more of your broader issues and then the, the code provides more detail, you know, it's a little bit more regulatory in, and how it's done or by policy. So really, I mean, it's discretionary on your part. You can specify in great detail in the charter. Or you could, the charter could authorize code provisions, then you can include it in the code. Or the charter could authorize policies and it could be included in policy. So there's really, you know, a lot of discretion as to how we would structure.
I would add to that, Mike, that I believe your oath covers the charter and the laws and ordinances. But so it would cover the code as well. And so if either or both, the charter and the code at least provided the authority for mayor and council to create rules and policies for themselves by, by proxy, I would assume you're, you know, acknowledging that in the oath. But the creating it separately, I think, creates a little more flexibility as things, as things evolve, right? We may want to include other protected classes, for example, that may not have been identified now, today, that come online, you know, a few years from now. So you, if you put everything in the charter, it kind of sends you back to the charter for frequent amendments. And I think both Lynn would, we would agree with each other that, you know, you want to treat your constitution for the city, you know, with, with not having. I mean, we should change it when it needs to be changed, but you certainly don't want to have frequent amendments there.
Right. Well, you know, like flexibility is always important, but I think for some things that it's, it's a little bit, to have too much flexibility is probably not what we're looking for here. I think we need to be, whatever code we decide to adopt, or whatever we adopt in code, I guess, has got to be, have some precision to it and some, and, and not be so dynamic that we're, we're looking to change it. You know, that whatever elected body is, is serving is looking to change it for whatever reasons there, you know, that would happen. So, anyway. And then I suppose, you know, and this is, I'm just throwing this out there because somebody might ask, is if we do this, if we adopt something like this, if we adopted in, in the charter and established a code for it, is any of it potentially retroactive? Can any of, any actions be retro, retroactive to behavior that occurred prior to the passage of this? That, that, that wouldn't be possible, right?
You know, it would not be retroactive. And in many of the policies I looked at, they also had a, like a one-year statute of limitations so that if something, you know, something happened tomorrow, somebody would have to follow the link within a one-year period. So that would be something that we would want to look at and include some type of limitations period.
So, you know, I, I like option one and option three. I don't, I'm not, I'm not opposed to creating a code of conduct either. But perhaps, well, we'll see how, how this all plays out in discussion with our colleagues. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. We'll go to Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Lynn, for the presentation. First, a few questions and then some pontification. Discrimination, how would that, how would you contemplate that? Because you had a slide on that. How would you contemplate that? Because would it be individual discrimination or through official act? Because if it's an official act, you'd need a vote of the three in order to actually effectuate some kind of discrimination against somebody in an official capacity?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be on an individual basis. And, you know, where we've seen this come up in, you know, in other, other parts of the country, not here, you know, it has, has more been, you know, sexual discrimination between an elected official and staff. You know, I mean, those are kind of the classic examples.
Okay, yeah, I'm just having a hard time picturing how you can discriminate somebody in your official capacity in a council if you're officially acting only with the majority vote of the council. Okay.
But you have a lot of individual interactions with, with staff, other elected officials, you know, other.
More under the harassment or hostile work environment type of contract? Okay. Greenville recently censured its mayor. How did they do that?
Yeah, there is not specific authorization for censure in state law, but it's not also either prohibited by state law. And home rule municipalities have authority to do anything that's not prohibited by state law or state constitution. So I'm assuming that they interpreted that since censure is not specifically prohibited, that they have the authority to, to censure.
Okay, so if, and I'm not going to single anybody out or talk about any conduct. If a majority of us thought that somebody on council did something that's censurable, we could just pass a resolution censuring that person? And that's legal?
Yes.
Okay. And then third question, and it just, it just left my mind. Oh, okay. Felonies and misdemeanors, misdemeanors under state law, and I guess the felonies in our code. How does that treat, if at all, pre-trial diversion and expungement? Like if there's a, if there's no conviction, then what is actionable?
Under the, the Maryland Constitution provisions for misdemeanors involving moral turpitude related to your official duties, you are not removed from office unless there is a conviction. So there would have to be a conviction for there to be action. The Constitution does provide that someone could be kind of basically placed on something akin to administrative leave during the, the trial and potential appeal process. But the removal wouldn't occur until a conviction.
Okay, and what about the felony under?
Yeah, under a felony, currently under state law, there's no provision removing you from office for a felony. So for example, someone, I'll use the extreme example, you could go out and commit murder and still be a council member, assuming, you know, you could still make the meetings. But, and, but many Maryland jurisdictions do prohibit individuals or have them removed from office for conviction of a felony. But we currently, Gaithersburg currently does not have that provision in its charter.
Okay, I saw Ryan, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I saw Ryan's hand up. I have some more questions, though.
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I just wanted to add, and Lynn may know a little bit about this, but this may answer one of council member Wu's questions. I thought this was kind of just an interesting case. There was a council member out of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, who a couple of years ago, or a year ago, I think pled nolo contendere to some sort of felony, to get involved unlawfully, recording conversations or something like that. And I think there was a lot of discussion at that time about whether a nolo plea really constitutes, you know, the conviction that would ban this person from holding office. And I believe, I believe the town council in Chesapeake Beach took the position that it did. I don't know whatever happened, or if there was a legal challenge to that or not, but, you know. So there are situations where I guess something like a probation before judgment or a nolo plea, you know, there'd be a legal question as to whether that is the equivalent of a conviction or not.
Okay, that's helpful. So I guess my, my pontifications now. I'm not really keen on regulating conduct so long as it's not criminal conduct. And so, you know, my philosophy, I guess, would be, you know, if, if the citizens of residents of Gaithersburg elected jerk, who is it for us to say that they can't serve as a jerk? And it's a very, it's a, it's a, where, where do you ultimately set that line would be the question? So I'm not keen on kind of a code of conduct type of thing. I am keen on, one, in line with my questions on the felony and the misdemeanor that, you know, if you're convicted of a misdemeanor, obviously under state law, you go. If you're convicted under a felony, I would, I would be in favor of having that in, as a sanctionable activity under our municipal laws. But I would also be interested in having it such that, and I don't know how you word this, that, you know, unless you, in all circumstances where you are not found not guilty, it can be actionable. And so if, for example, you're charged with a felony and you are culpable for it, but you've entered a pre-trial diversion program for whatever the case may be, and it's ultimately expunged, or, you know, you ultimately do some kind of conduct such that it doesn't become a conviction, you know, that doesn't mean that whatever you did shouldn't be sanctionable under, as far as your position's concerned, in my mind. I do think clarifying the code that if you leave the city, if you're no longer resident of the city of Gaithersburg, you're no longer qualified to serve. I always read that as go bye-bye, not that, but to the extent that it's not clear, I think we should clarify that. And then policies of harassment, sexual harassment, work, hostile workplace. I think those are policy, or those are, that is conduct that I think uniformly society will agree because, you know, there are workplace policies on this, that, that is not acceptable. I would probably be more in favor of gearing those rules and regulations and sanctionable activities towards your official capacity in, in your interactions with staff rather than with the public as well. I'm not sure I'd want to put the city manager or any city staff in the position of investigating or adjudicating. So I think I would rather have that kind of activity regulated by the Ethics Commission or some kind of body that's outside of the responsibility of the city manager. Because I get, I don't, I wouldn't want to put the city manager or staff in a position of having to investigate and, and take action on that conduct. Thanks.
So, thank you, Rob. Lorian, did you want to chime? So, uh thank you, Rob, um Laurie, did you want to chime in on this or? You want to wait for a bit?
I can wait.
Okay, and. Neil, can you, can you hear me, Neil?
I can hear you.
Did you want to chime in on this before we go to the public?
No, let's go to the public, I'd be curious to see if anyone else has something to to say about this.
Okay, I I feel like this this meeting is more to sort of. Broadly just choose a direction, it's not to get terribly deep into the details, because I agree with the. With the staff recommendation that. Um two people can form a subcommittee and sort of take the lead on this, and we can, we can work that out a little bit later. But I, for now, I want to open it up to anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this topic. Um we ask that you keep your comments in the more, no more than three minutes, if you have more than three minutes worth of uh material to give us, then. You can email, you can email us lots and lots of material, and we'll read it and consider it just like oral testimony. Um tech team, if you can play the uh instructional video, that'd be great. For, and so if anybody wants to speak, this is what you have to do.
Good evening, if you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment. We can't currently see or hear you, what you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen, you should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please, alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Thank you, tech team, and of course, we ask that you state your name and address, or if you prefer your neighborhood for the record. Uh tech team, I see one hand raised, it is David Belgard, Dave, uh you know the deal, unmute yourself, state your name. And address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and uh city council, my name is Dave Belgard, Washington Woods. I have found this conversation um to be very interesting and enlightening. Uh especially because I feel strongly that anybody uh with power, whether it's political or commercial. Or otherwise. Should always be ready to put rules in place that are designed to control it. And to control the people on that body, uh I'm gratified to see that Gaithersburg is working in that direction. Uh and thank Councilmember Spiegel and uh and you, Mayor Ashman, for uh starting that conversation. I think the point that Councilmember Wu made about being very careful about removing the will of the people. And uh if if a jerk is elected, a jerk is elected, I I think that is an excellent point to to consider. Lesser actions that are not, that do not involve so much. Uh removing a person from office, except in the most extremist circumstances. Um I do think are a good thing to codify and uh and 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 be considered. Uh various types of sanctions and censure, as we have seen, have been used all around the nation. Um are, I think, important mechanisms. That's it, I just wanted to say, uh once again, thank you to the mayor and council for for bringing this topic up, I think it's a very important one to discuss, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, I do not see any other hands up at this moment, so we will end public comments, I will. Um express my general agreement with the principle that if it is the will of the people of this, of the of of the city of Gaithersburg. To elect somebody who is hard to deal with, a jerk, as Rob puts it, that those are the breaks. Um and the mechanisms that we put in place should not, you know, should be drawn very carefully. Uh not to penalize somebody for their personality, for a differing difference in politics or anything like that, should be. Um again, I feel like, yeah, using. The words in in one meeting, we got malfeasance, misfeasance, uh tur- moral turpitude, and I just feel like we should all get law degrees. Out of this this session right now, um but um. I don't even, as a non-lawyer, uh I I'm not even aware of the entire spectrum of what felonies are. There, I I could imagine, for example, if somebody on the council. Were to get into a fight, you know, with somebody, it doesn't have anything to do with with this, uh their work in the city of Gaithersburg. Um but somehow they get convicted of a felony, I think there should be some mechanism for. Uh the council to say, you're not just automatically forfeiting your office for a felony, but it should be, there should be some consideration for. For things that have nothing to do with the city and aren't murder or. Something terrible, I don't know, maybe felonies don't include stuff that isn't terrible, I I just don't know, but so I I feel like. Whoever are two that want to form this subcommittee. Should give some strong consideration to that, Mike, I see your hand up, good, what's on your mind, Mike?
I was just volunteering.
Volunteering to be on the on the two-person subcommittee, do we have any other volunteers, Ryan? And I don't see any other hands go up, this is going to be very simple. Okay, so so Lynn. Given we have two volunteers from the council to be on this committee, how shall we proceed?
Uh well, well, certainly, if if that is the committee, uh staff will probably get the more information they want from samples from other jurisdictions. Um we will set up some meetings and start working on the policy.
Okay, any other questions, uh Lynn, do we need a formal? Vote to to uh constitute this committee, or is it just a simple, these two raised their hands, so we have a committee, a subcommittee?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. Well, then, um that being said. I think we have um moved forward on this topic and Tanisha, I'm assuming you and you and Lynn feel guided. And we're good here. Okay, all right, well, the, well, then with that, I will um. Remind everybody that. The Gaithersburg Book Festival is going on, um this, this is the final week of adult programming, and then next, the next two weeks will be. Uh children's and then teen young adult uh programming, so join us, we got some amazing, amazing programs and. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.